All right. Good evening, and welcome to the Planning Commission Meeting of Monday, April 14, 2025. I now call the meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll have Commissioner Andrade lead us.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Anna, will you read the voice roll call?
Chair Harlan.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas is absent. Commissioner Klepak?
Here.
Commissioner Andrade?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Okay, great. We have one presentation tonight. It's the 2024 Annual Progress Report, and I'm going to turn it over to Paivon, our Principal Planner, to present the item.
Thank you, Chair Harlan. My name is Paivon Nata Von Duan Si. I'm Principal Planner for the Economic Development Service Department, Planning Division. I'll be presenting the 2024 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. The annual progress report is a yearly check-in with the state. It provides the state an overview of how the city has implemented its six-cycle housing element, which covers the planning period from October 2021 to October 2029. The State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, uses the information to track progress of our implementation, as well as use it for eligibility for multiple grant opportunities. It uses state agencies every year, April 1. The city is committed to implementing 47 housing programs and also rezoning or providing housing capacity on 97 housing opportunity sites to meet its regional housing goals. As a reminder, the city was allocated 11,716 units. The APR was presented to City Council on March 18. After its City Council approved the APR, staff did submit the APR for HCD through its online portal. For this presentation, I will be covering activities that occurred in 2024, highlight the housing production, building permits, overall housing production for the planning period. I also will highlight some of the housing programs that we have progressed and implemented since October 2021. And I will also highlight some pipeline housing development projects that, once a building permit is issued, we could use the units towards our meeting our arena allocation. In 2024, we completed construction of 284 housing units. This is Deluxe Apartment. Twenty of the units are set aside for moderate income. We've issued 123 residential building permits entitled for housing development projects that will increase the housing supply by 10 units. We received eight housing development applications for projects that includes two or more units, which will increase our housing units by 272 units. This table summarizes the building permits that has been issued from October 21 through December 2024. The majority of the affordable units are our accessory dwelling units, as well as Project Home Key, the motel conversion. A note on affordability for ADUs. In the past, HCD has allowed us to use a memo developed by the Southern California Association Government to justify the affordability of the ADU units. For this year, the Planning Division sent out a survey to all the applicants for the ADU building permits to survey the anticipated affordability of these units. We did receive response from a small number of those we surveyed. With the information that we collected, we were able to extrapolate the affordability of the ADU units for 2024. Moving forward, every building permit applicant for the ADU will be provided an affordability questionnaire that will ask the applicant, will the units be rented out? Will it be free of charge, used free of charge? And if it's rented out, what is the anticipated rental cost? So as we move through the sixth cycle planning period, we will have a better understanding of the affordability levels of the ADUs. The city has retained a consulting firm that assists us in the rezoning program that is set to begin in spring 2025. The rezoning program will implement about 18 of the 47 housing element programs that will increase the density and permitting housing in designated areas of the city. The following slides, I will highlight some of the implementation of the housing element programs. A full summary of the housing element programs are provided in the 2024 Housing Element APR Form Table D. I do apologize, I should have included a link to the APR in PowerPoint. It is posted online in our landing page for the annual progress report. Program 2A Affordable Housing Inclusionary Ordinance was approved in August 2024. It applies to rental projects and mixed-use development that includes 15 units or more. And depending on whether the density is 60 dwelling units or more, or the density is less than 60 dwelling units per acre, there's a different level affordability percentage that the developer would need to set aside for low and very low households. The second phase of that program, the city is developing an implementation and enforcement program. This includes assisting developers, collecting and managing in new fees, funding affordable housing projects, creating partnerships, and ensuring compliance with the low-income rental requirements. 1,144 units that are subject to affordability confidence, including 74 very low units at Casa Bella Apartments, which was previously at risk to be converted for market-rate units. We did confirm with the project management for Casa Bella Apartments that they did renew their HCD agreement, which keeps these units affordable for the lifetime of the project. Program 3E, promote the development of accessory dwelling units. This is an ongoing project. The city updated its municipal code March 2025 to streamline the ADU production pursuant to state law. The city also launched its pre-approved ADU program, and we are currently reviewing seven designs, which will be available for the public to use by spring 2025. The city also launched an ADU legalization program early this year to help legalize unpermitted ADUs built before January 1, 2020. Program 4A Tenant Protection Program, Fair Housing Program. This is an ongoing program. The city approved the program in 2023. In 2024, the city received no-fault eviction notices affecting 31 households. Of these affected 20 eviction notices were authorized, resulting in lawful eviction. Each of the households were contacted by the city outreach worker to offer voluntary assistance during the eviction process. Eleven eviction notices were denied, resulting in eviction being reversed. These households were allowed to remain in their homes. Program 3B, Fairview Developmental Center Specific Plan. This year, I'm sorry, in 2024, we focused on community engagement, continue coordinating planning efforts with the state agencies, with the Department of General Services on the construction of their Regional Emergency Operations Center, and we also worked with Department of Development Services on their housing needs and programs. We are currently working through the financial feasibility analysis with the state agencies to ensure that the plan can be successfully implemented. We anticipate holding a study session here with the commission next month. Pipeline projects. So the city continues to monitor and track the number of housing units in the pipeline during the planning period. These are important to track because, in addition to the rezoning programs, these approved housing projects, once the building permit is issued, will count towards our arena, meeting arena allocation. This table summarizes the approved housing development that were approved since October 20-- that were approved, and, as I stated, will count towards our arena allocation. We have about 100 or 1,301 units in the pipeline. So it includes One Metro West, Jamboree Housing, a couple Live Work projects, Travelodge Conversion, Phase 2 of the Motel 6 Conversion, and another Live Work project. In the following slides, I would show the locations and highlight these projects. Proposed housing development that are submitted and currently under development review includes the multifamily apartment Hive Life, single-room occupancy, small lot ordinance that includes a density bonus request, condominiums, single-family townhomes, and a couple of detached single-family units. If approved, it would increase the housing supply by 1,303 units. Deluxe Apartment completed construction this-- in 2024. Provides 209 units, and 20 of which are restricted to moderate-income households. The city approved two-unit small lot subdivisions located at 1022 West Wilson Street and 146 Rochester Street. We also approved a four-unit four-ADU complex at 347 and 367 Hamilton Street, a two-unit one-ADU project at 241 Ogilvy Street. One Metro West, we approved the revised development agreement June 2024. This project will provide 1,050 units. 106 of the units will be affordable. The city approved the Jamboree Senior Housing Project in March 2024. 69 of the units will be affordable. One of the units is considered above moderate, and that's the manager's unit. The state unit Live Work project was approved in September 2023. They're all be considered above moderate. This nine-unit Live Work project located at 1540 Superior Avenue was approved October 2023, and it's also considered above moderate. The city secured funding for the Travelodge Conversion Project, Project Home Key, August of 2024. Once converted, will provide 76 affordable units and two above-moderate units. Phase 1 of the motel conversion project was completed last year and provided 40 units. The city also secured funding for Phase 2 of this project last year, and all of the units will be set aside for seniors and be considered affordable. This 38-unit Live Work project was approved February 2025 and is considered all above moderate. The following projects are projects that are under development review. This one is for the Hive Life project. This is one of the city's housing opportunity sites. It will provide 1,050 units. Forty-five of the units will be affordable. 3150 Bear Street, there's a proposal for detached single-family residential units and townhomes. It will provide 142 units, seven of which will be affordable. The project on 2020 through 2036 Victoria Street will redevelop an existing commercial industrial site to provide for 40 units. This will be a condominium project. The six-unit small lot subdivision is a density bonus request. It was located at 215 and 223 Mesa Drive. One of the units will be set aside for moderate-income households. This three-unit small lot subdivision is located at 734 West 20th Street. We have another 10-unit small lot subdivision located at 2195 Pacific Avenue. We're currently processing a single-room occupancy project that will provide 46 affordable units. This is detached single-family development that will provide two units located at 2074 Pomona Avenue. And we have a duplex and EDU, three units, located at 210 Cabrello Street. We have a future application that will be submitted soon, in accordance with the applicant. This site located at 296 21st Street will provide approximately 21 units, detached townhomes. The site is currently vacant. It used to be a location for Mobile Home Park. Again, this Housing Element APR was provided to City Council March 18. The APR will be attached to the general plan, annual progress report, that will be presented to City Council tomorrow. And that concludes staff presentation, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Paivon. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Let me put it on discussion mode. Okay. Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you. Paivon, I've got a couple of questions for you. So when you indicate that the APR was after presented to council was submitted to HCD, was-- when was that submitted?
It was submitted a week after it was presented to City Council.
Okay.
We did receive kickback from the system indicating that there were some errors in the form, just specifically how we report demolition permits. So we had to attach it to new building permits. So we made that adjustment, submitted back into the portal, and it was accepted.
Okay. Then I've got a question having to do with the One Metro West project. So your indication on page 7 is that this project will be completed within the sixth cycle, which is in 2029. Do you have any recent indication from Ros Equities that they are actually going to complete all phases of the project in the next four years?
Yes. So we do anticipate them completing, at least a portion, hopefully all of the development. We are working with them currently on potentially revising, a minor revision to their track map. So that's where we are in the process with One Metro West.
Okay. With regard to the ADU survey that you indicated would be provided when people apply for an ADU, is the return of that survey voluntary?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then, when you were talking about the evictions on page 6, you mentioned that 11 were denied.
That's correct. I don't have information on why it was denied. As part of the permitting process review, the eviction permits, and the city denies them.
Really?
Yes. And so, right. And if, Commissioners, if you need more information of why it was denied, we could get that information to you.
If a property owner wanted to contest the city's denial, what's their appeal process?
Commissioners, good question. There is a process for that. The Building Department works with both the property owner and the tenant on this process. Usually, the ones that we did get that were denied were usually because they didn't follow the proper instructions for when the tenant was to be denied, or it didn't meet a certain threshold to evict the tenant based on the construction that they were proposing. There's a certain level of construction that they have to do to go through the process without affording the tenant certain rights. And again, we can provide a good amount of information if you're ever interested for that.
No, but thank you for your answer, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah. Questions and comments, or just questions?
Both.
Okay. Then I'll start with a comment. For future items for-- that are like, kind of like this, we've had a few presentations before. I think it'd be nice if it was just under New Business as Received and File. That way, it's not just like at the top. Okay. Questions? I'm just going to go in order from the presentation. On the consent calendar for tomorrow's City Council, they're also talking about the annual, the APR. I wanted to know what that item was about, since it seems like we already submitted it.
Yeah, so that's the overview of the entire general plan implementation. The-- there's two parts to the APR. One is how we've progressed towards achieving our vision that's set and outlined in our general plan. The other part is this Housing Element APR. We wanted to move forward with the Housing Element APR first, because it is a static form. HCD does have a new online portal. We want to make sure that we address any major issues with that submittal before the April 1 deadline. So that was the reason why it's been bifurcated.
All right. Regarding our IHO, could you just remind me what the affordability levels are for the 60-plus and the less than 60?
Oh, yes. I do have that information. Also, rental project, density of 60 dwelling units, acres or more, will provide 10% low and 5% very low. A density of less than 60 dwelling units per acre will provide 6% low and 4% very low.
Thank you. For the Fairview Developmental Center specific plan, I've heard study session next month since I've joined the commission, so I really want to be sure, because I've been telling people about this project and how they should tune into Planning Commission so that they can actually hear about the Fairview Developmental Center. And I know it's been a lot of work, but can I actually tell people study session next month, or should I hold off?
Thanks, Commissioner Martinez. That's a great question, and I really do hope we come back next month. Obviously, we'll continue to inform the commission. The biggest thing that we've been working on is the financial feasibility analysis and making sure it's refined and it's accurate. It's taken a lot of time. We've vetted it with other developers to make sure our assumptions have been correct, and we're meeting with the state this month to go through that and make sure that they understand the assumptions and they don't have any other, like, clarifying questions. At that point, we'll come back for a study session. So that meeting is scheduled. It is happening. I feel excited about it. So that was kind of the remaining piece before we can come back to the Planning Commission and really explore the land use concepts, and hopefully this spring, get your recommendation on a preferred plan that we can bring to the City Council.
Fantastic. I hope it's next month. I'm really excited for it, too. I'm on slide 8 now for approved pipeline projects. How many of these are under construction or, like, nearing construction?
The Live Work projects, I believe they're-- the grading permits have been issued, so there have been activities associated with the Live Work located at 11 or 1711 Pomona Avenue. and 1540 Superior.
Okay.
Phase two, currently they're working through their building permit process to get phase two completed.
Good. Okay, and then the next slide. I asked about the IHO numbers earlier, and that's because I saw Hive Live has 45 very low. That's not an IHO number, is it?
It is not. They submitted their application prior to the city approving their IHO.
Gotcha, okay. How many of the ones on this slide, number nine, need Planning Commission approval?
I would say probably more than half.
Yeah, five or six.
Just on a quick look. You've got three, Pivon?
Yeah.
Great.
The condominium, the project on Bear Street, the small lot ordinance with the density bonus request, the single-room occupancy, and then Hive Live.
Yeah, generally anything with a subdivision that's behind it, that's not an SB9, which is exempted, but for the most part, I think your numbers are pretty good, Pivon. Thanks.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping that we can get to all these very quickly so that we can actually discuss the possibility of more housing. So hopefully, we don't have another month off, is what I'm saying.
Actually, several of those are on my board of upcoming projects.
Fantastic. I'm skipping through all of these slides, just making sure. All right. Thank you very much. Very excited to see all these projects coming through, and I'm very hopeful that we'll ha, we'll be very busy very soon. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, any other, Vice Chair Zick?
Just to follow up on the question that Commissioner Martinez asked about the Hive Live. I think your, your answer was that their application came in before the inclusionary housing ordinance was passed. Isn't it also the case, though, that if that project is going to be covered by a development agreement, the IHO doesn't apply? And this is likely a project that'll have a development agreement?
That's correct. It would likely have a development agreement.
Thank you.
It does have a development agreement, Commissioner, Vice Chair Zick, and we are negotiating it right now currently.
All right, Commissioner Dixon.
I just had a quick question. It was mentioned that there is, and I may have been able to find this on the City Council stuff, but if you would know off the top of your hand, the consultant hired for the rezoning effort, you know, we went through a very, it was a very comprehensive effort going into the upcoming rezoning of the corridors and all this other stuff. And I think it was exhaustively studied and gone over and debated. So I'm curious. My concern with consultants is that they disappear into back rooms and come up with all kinds of ideas, and then we get to go post something on a board that's not changing really anything. And so I'd, I'd be more, obviously, it's not our decision about whether or not to hire consultants, but I would be, I would like it to be more of an organic, homegrown sort of zoning effort instead of, you know, third-party consultants who may not be live and feel and work Costa Mesa every day. So that's my concern, and I'd be curious what their role is in the rezoning. Is it just a technical document preparation sort of thing, or is it a conceptual thing? Or is it a selecting lots? I'd like to better understand that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. It's, it's a little bit of both. It's a good question, and it's a little bit of a complex answer. So some of the things in the housing element, like certain densities and like certain urban plans or specific plans were already predetermined by the city. And so they are looking at that guidance, and they're going to be following it as part of the rezon process. The Measure K sites are already defined, so there's, that, that scope is not getting reopened. The things that are, are up for discussion, you know, are things like objective design standards, maybe some zoning code ordinance updates. There's a lot of programs that speak at a very high level generally to, you know, encouraging housing opportunities and allowing more permitted housing in different areas. And so those are the things that they are going to be speaking with the community about. You know, what is the design and look of these housing projects? What should it look like? What should it include? What should we require of developers? Those are the things that we still are going to be seeking input from the community on. So it's a little, it's a little bit of both. We've had a kickoff meeting with them already where we've gotten to explain to them the history in more detail and how we came to some of these decisions that are in the housing element. We're still having that conversation with them, so that's going to guide the process. They're not going to be, you know, going off on their own and making recommendations, you know, that don't take into the account the history that we've already been through.
And, and do you know off the top of your head if they've got a lot of on-the-ground experience in local communities? Or are they, where are they from? Where's, what's their sort of portfolio?
Yeah, they're based in California. They have offices in LA. They have local offices in Orange County, and they have offices in San Diego, too. They have offices all up and down California, but locally to us there. One of the things we really liked when we were going through the RFP process is that they have a lot of experience with San Diego. They were one of the first cities, they helped them write their housing ordinance. They were one of the first cities that went through this new RENA cycle. And so they were seeing firsthand HCD actually making interpretations and decisions about RENA and how these efforts would be implemented. And they also have a former staff person who worked at HCD who's involved in our process. And her role is to help make sure that we get certification, that we're doing the right rezoning efforts in order to get HCD to say, yes, you comply.
Right, and also, I'm not as concerned with HCD from a, but San Diego has an extraordinarily diverse housing stock. So I like that it's not a mono sort of community. So that's, that's a good, that's a, that's a positive indicator. Thank you very much.
Yeah, if I might also add, Commissioner Dixon, the consultant will also be preparing that technical aspect. It's the ER, E-I-R, sorry, said that kind of quickly. And then we've also recently toured them around the city, the team, and showed them all the housing sites and different areas, the commercial areas, where we're going to focus our housing inventories and our rezon areas. And like Anna mentioned, they do have an HCD staff person, which is actually very important. Oh, yeah, even one of, one of their comments was they remember my name for some reason, probably when I was doing the housing element. So that was a little scary when she mentioned that, but I think it was probably maybe, I don't know, hopefully funny. But having her in the, on the team really makes for a lot of improvements with the process to be able to predict and presume what the HCD will do with our rezon program. So it makes a huge difference. It was, it was kind of exciting for staff to know that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Andrade.
Yeah. Thank you so much for the wonderful and very detailed report. Really great to see the work that's being done, especially the details on page six. Thank you for making efforts and keeping individuals and Costa Mesa residents housed, considering that we're in a housing crisis in our community. So fighting those unfair evictions when they happen and providing the support. It's great to hear that the system is effective, right? Because I know that this is a new installed service, so thank you so much for that. One quick feedback piece, or, or maybe you can share a little bit of more detail in the, the charts of the projected projects and what's approved already. Is there, I mean, could you maybe share a break, maybe a little further breakdown of showing what is rental, what is owner for ownership? I mean, I know at first glance, live-work most likely is, or am I assuming, right? Our ownership directly, you know, Project Home Key, that's going to be rental.
That's correct.
Yeah?
Yes, so the live-work products will be ownership housing. The rental would be the senior housing at Jamboree. One Metro West would be rental. The Travelodge conversion and Motel 6 conversion will also be rental.
Yeah. Yeah, so maybe for the future iterations, I think it would be helpful to see what's the balance that we're breaking out, considering, right, Costa Mesa is about, I don't know, 60% or more rental, primarily rental, and there's always this constant conversation, what is the path that we're providing for Costa Mesa residents, our future workforce here in Costa Mesa of owning a home here in Orange County? And also, I think it would be helpful, you know, I know, again, we're in it, so we understand very clearly what we mean by very low, low, to either have a legend somewhere of what that, what's the average salary bracket that we're expecting individuals to have, right? Because it's easy to think, oh, moderate, that's about, I don't know, 100K? Or something like that, but that's actually considered low. So having that estimate, I think it's really helpful to, just to bring clarity and be able to have a further transparency in the report, I think would be very helpful, so that would be great to see. And then another question I had, and I appreciate you going through the report and breaking down again, what is going to be above and moderate? That's really helpful to review. One quick question that I had is in the, and maybe, you know, again, I don't know, this is not detailed in the report, but maybe you can give us a little, a brief highlight on what are, out of all, you know, through these projects, as you collaborate with developers and anything that's coming down the pipeline, what is the city's role or support or encouragement? Like, what is the process of encouraging that development is sustainable, right? And reading Costa Mesa's 2021 Sustainability Report, I know we're making meaningful efforts to continue on the LEED certification for the city. There's also some great forewarnings that in the next 30 years, Costa Mesa is going to experience wildfires, extreme heat, flooding. So how are these developments that are coming up the pipeline that are going to be serving our community for the future? How are they incorporating energy recovery, you know, natural light, ways to make it more sustainable? Maybe you can highlight a little bit about how that is implemented?
Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. I can answer at a really high level. There's a couple of things. Obviously, we have building code requirements to speak to sustainability. So, you know, from EV charging requirements to sea level rise to fire risk zones that would have additional requirements for buildings. We also, like, where we can encourage developers to look at environmentally sustainable practices that we know are just like good industry practices. But the city has less, you know, ability to like require developers to do that. One of the things that we're hoping for through the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan is that our consultant will help identify some implementation measures. Those could be a range of things. There, they could be policy requirements. They could end up becoming part of reach codes. They could end up becoming part of our planning requirements. And those will have a particular focus, not only on sustainability, but adaptation, which will help not only get those greenhouse gas emissions down to pre-1990 levels, but also help cities adapt for future. So providing cooling centers for residents, things that are maybe not necessarily just development-oriented, but would help communities and residents be able to, you know, live in higher sustained heat and things that we're, you know, predicting that will happen over the next several years. So, you know, that process has just started. I don't have a good list of examples of what that would look like yet, but hopefully, as we continue to go through this process, we'll be able to provide, you know, more examples of what those policies or requirements would actually look like.
And is there ever, you know, looking at a, a cost analysis, right? If we're developing buildings that won't last and won't survive these challenges, especially just being hyper-aware with what just happened in LA and considering we have the very similar, if not the same, landscape here. Is there any conversation about the cost-benefit analysis? You know, what is a, you know, if a lot of these properties are for ownership, you know, what kind of protections are these homeowners going to be able to have? Are these conversations being had with also those homeowners when they come in? Like, hey, this, this area is forecasted to experience this kind of disaster. It just seems like a good, proper investment, right, for our developers to could take that into consideration and?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's a great idea, and I'm hoping that our Climate Action and Adaptation will help identify those areas better. We're constantly getting information at the county and at the state level where we anticipate more fire risk or, you know, sea level rise, whatever it may be, so that we can deal with those longer-term sustainability issues. But, you know, through the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, I think we'll be able to highlight, you know, for homeowners, like, what are some of the, the day-to-day things that you can even be doing in their house that, you know, is maybe not a part of like building practices and stuff?
And so, and you mentioned that would be under the purview of City Council. What body would be the one that would determine?
Yeah, City Council ultimately.
Awesome, great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Klebeck, last chance.
I don't have anything additional. Just thank you very much for the progress report. It's very exciting to see what has been approved and is underway, and I'm really looking forward to hearing the additional ones that are coming up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just have one quick note, which was on the Luxe Project 2277 Harbor. It's 200 units, and it's nine deed-restricted affordable. So just for, make sure it's accurate as we pass it along to council. And I'll, I'll limit my editorial comments to, to kind of the simple point that inasmuch as the council has put in place over the last couple of years some, I think, good incentives and foundation for development, the, what we have so far is, I would say, kind of a tepid. The pipeline is not quite robust, a word I love to use. I mean, if you take out the two largest projects, One Metro West and the Hive, and in particular, just looking at the five years of what's been approved, that's something on the order of 250 units. And of those, half of them are publicly funded projects, the Project Home Key. So it is a paltry number of new private development. And then even if you look at close, even more closely, 70 units are Jamboree Housing's project, which is, you know, a nonprofit, but it's, it suits a very specific audience. So I'm hoping we get to the point where we don't have to count a duplex and an ADU as part of our pipeline. Those should be more just regular accounting, and we do see the kind of investment that we desperately need here. All right, that's enough from me. Let's move on to public comments. Public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within our jurisdiction. I'll open the public comment, and if you'd like to speak, anyone in the chambers, come to the podium. Or if you're participating by Zoom, use the raise hand option at the bottom of the screen. And if you're joining in by phone and like to speak, please press star nine. Anybody in chambers wish to speak? Seeing none. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or phone?
Caller ending in 613, you may provide your public comment.
Yes, hi, good evening. First off, I want to state a comment that there is no housing crisis. Not everyone just will live where they want. That's the actual reality of that situation. The projects that are coming down the pipe in Costa Mesa are going to destroy the city. I don't understand how we have a Planning Commission and a City Council that is so out of touch with what the residents actually want. If you just talk to a random resident about all this development, high-density development, you're going to find that you, the majority of you on the, on this body, you're the outliers. This, this body does not represent the love of the citizens. And if hellbent on building out a city for our future workforce, well, you're turning parcels that are zoned for commerce and retail or whatever in the housing. When are these people going to work? Everyone going to work from home? I don't, it, I honestly just wish that we could have legislative bodies that understand that we're built out. I wish we would have fought the state on the RENA mandates and realized that, for example, I believe at Spar Oaks where Gavin Newsom had a house, they only were required to build 51 units. And if we were to do a, you know, orange-to-orange comparison, like square mileage, it would have been in the thousands. Or apple-to-apple population, it would have also been in the thousands. We are going to get hammered with this. Now, you talk about sustainability. Sustainability for what? Do you know that the, the, the big giant storm on Jupiter is changing? You know that? That what, that climate is changing? Is it from our, our CO2 emissions on Earth? Climate change is because of the sun, not because of what we do. It's, I, I watch this, I almost feel like I'm watching a skit with what comes out of people's mouths. And we're going to, everyone's going to ride a bike? And we're going to, everyone's going to ride a bike? You know, what a waste of our money that you guys turn 19th Street, or some of you support turning 19th Street into bike lane. How about push for 17th Street, East Side? I'd love to see that. Make East Side 17th Street a single lane. But anyway, back to development. This board is out of touch with what the will of the residents are. 99.9% of the residents have no idea what the government's doing or what's coming along. They just see what happens and say, oh, man, this sucks. And they don't know why it happened or who greenlit it or whatever. You have a responsibility to go out and listen to the residents, because most people don't like what the city is turning into. And there's a, there's an attitude that the people in charge don't care. And I wish, I wish you guys could just go talk to the random people and realize how I'm a potential.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anna, anybody else?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. I will now close public comment. Moving on to planning commissioner comments and suggestions. If you just want to put on your mic, because we're on discussion mode, I'll recognize you. Anybody have any comments? First up, Vice Chair Zick.
Just two things. I'd like to echo and support what Commissioner Martinez suggested with regard to future presentations, similar to the one we had tonight, putting that as new business. Give an opportunity for the public to comment. I wouldn't consider the content to be insignificant, and so I think the public engagement, to the extent that they want to engage, would be beneficial. And on that note, I can't help but listen and agree with some of the comments from, I don't think he identified himself, but I know who, who just commented. I can't really speak to the idea of whether or not we're out of touch, whether or not we're listening or not listening to the public. The only thing I can point out is that the chamber, with the exception to one individual who I don't recognize, is empty. I would love to listen to the public. If you watch these meetings on a regular basis, you know that when we have more than half a dozen people in here, I'm thrilled and I recognize them. I want the public engagement. They've got to come here. They've got to listen to these meetings. They've got to take an interest in the issues that we're talking about. That's all I've got.
Okay. Good points. Commissioner Dixon and then Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you, and I, I do appreciate your comment and followed up by Commissioner Vice Chair Zick about the moving that to new business. I think, I think the more engagement and public comment and involvement on any of our items are great. And along, along those lines, we just had, you know, two meetings that we didn't have. And I understand that there is a pipeline, and I understand that there's development applications, and there's, that's not something that's within staff's control. But, you know, I'm a big fan of study sessions or informational sessions where we're presented with, you know, information on any number of issues. For instance, you know, in light of the report tonight, you know, what sort of information can staff give the commission on, on the outreach and efforts that the staff is making or the city is making, either through consultants or lobbyists or staff themselves in economic development and outreach? I know several of us work in, in the industry and development, and, you know, we can tell you there's a pent-up demand. It's, it's all about making it work, either from a financial standpoint or a land use standpoint, an entitlement standpoint. So, you know, there is a pent-up demand, and, and I think that, that the chair is 100% correct. This is, this is an awful pipeline. And, and it's great that stuff is happening, but it would be great if we didn't have duplexes and ADUs on our pipeline, that we had more substantive stuff. And, and whether or not it's right for the city or whether or not it's a good project, that, that comes down the line. But, but to have developers interested in coming here and developing here and competing for parcels and, you know, knowing that Costa Mesa is a, you know, a friendly place for development, you know, it would be, it would be better for us to understand the efforts that are happening on there, for instance. Or, you know, looking at this report, I have an ADU that's basically a condo, but they're calling it an ADU. First floor is AD, accessory dwelling unit. Second floor is the residence, right? I'd like to bet, you know, there is an ordinance, the ordinance was, did go through the city council, there were all that other stuff, but, you know, maybe that's something that the public would want to better understand, of what is an ADU? Because I know there's neighborhoods where I have neighbors complaining to me that every garage is turning into an ADU or whatever, you know? So there is interest in the public. I know we want to promote ADUs, but also, you know, just, those are two examples of areas where maybe we could have, if we don't have stuff on the agenda from a project standpoint, maybe we could have an informational item. It's just, it's better use of, and it just helps get stuff out there. Along those lines, the caller did have a great point about disengagement. I know that you ran for city council, I ran for city council, we knocked on a ton of doors. And the amount of information that people know of what's going on in the city is shocking. It's, there's most, many, many people are incredibly disengaged. And I know the city can't go out and knock on everybody's door and say, you know, let's talk about what's happening in the city, but I don't know if we need to engage new thinking in public engagement. I don't know if there are other cities that are doing things in an innovative manner. I don't, I, just, it's something to think about. There is, and it's been this way forever. I mean, it's probably got to be one of the biggest problems staff has to face, is how to get people into door and then, you know, responding to complaints of something that has been public and you noticed for weeks that people say they've never heard about. So clearly, there's a disconnect between the public and how information is getting out there. So those are my comments. I appreciate the presentation tonight, and, and thanks very much.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you. First, I'll start off with the formal announcements. Tomorrow's council meeting is interesting. There's a few planning commission items that are on there that we've either sent to them or have been appealed to them. So tune in tomorrow. Not usual that city council is after us. On April 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., City Hall is hosting their Earth Day event, so please come and enjoy all of the booths and all the things that are going, going to be happening there. This morning, I attended the Orange County Transportation Authority Board of Directors meeting, where they discussed a planned amendment to the master plan of arterial highways, and they were trying to remove the, a planned bridge on Geesler that goes over to Garfield and Fountain Valley and Huntington Beach. Directors Katrina Foley, Director John Stevens, Councilman Mike Bealy was there, and so was the Public Works Director Rajesh Setharaman, all spoke against keeping that bridge on the master plan of arterial highways. Unfortunately, the OCTA board postponed the item, so it'll be heard in another 30 days. So if you live in Mesa Verde or the State Streets, I would encourage you to tune in to the Orange County Transportation Authority and send any emails if you have any comments on a bridge across the San Ana River at Geesler. And then I just wanted to comment on what we're, what we're talking about, community engagement and such. I went to, last week I also went to Fight PAC, and I also went to the Parks Commission. And the Parks Commission meeting was very interesting. They had an item on their agenda, which was essentially a study session on, on their values, on their values regarding the proposed CIP projects, the proposed capital improvement project, program projects. And it was nowhere near the typical meeting that they have or that any of our bodies have had. It was a discussion between the members. We don't get to talk among ourselves because of the Brown Act. And it was very interesting seeing their perspectives and how they want that program to go forward as it relates to the Parks budget. And I think that it'd be very nice if we could do anything like that, which is just have a conversation about one of, one of the issues that are under our jurisdiction. I know Parks has been really going forward and like using their agenda and, and actually putting things around the agenda that may not relate explicitly to something that is immediately forthcoming. So like, for us, that would be just a project. So it'd be nice to have, like Commissioner Dixon is saying, a study session related to one of our issues, and really get down in the weeds and so that we, so that we can talk amongst each other, but also so that the public can talk to us. Another idea that I've had previously is for the, the community engagement meetings that we normally have, be it about a project, or I know for active transportation, there's been, when something is going out in the community, you're going to have a meeting close to the site, and then you'll talk about the project. I think it'd be interesting if like, talking about the project there, it's also a noticed active transportation committee meeting for that kind of thing. Or if it's a development project, it's also a noticed planning commission project. We're all there, the community is invited specifically to talk about that project. That might be interesting. Maybe it's not the right format, but it's just something to think about. And I do hope that we can get more people engaged, because, yeah, it's, it's a bit disappointing sometimes seeing in empty chambers, so I hope we can change that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good comments and suggestions. All right. Commissioners, anything else? Seeing none? Okay. I just wanted to clarify my earlier comment, just so it's not misconstrued, in that I, I don't mean to minimize a duplex with an ADU or a single-family home. No, no, I, I know that wasn't the intention. I just want to make sure that, that the public understands too, that every, every home, every planning application, every dollar invested in our city is important. And, and I just want to make sure we get to a point where we don't have to rely on very small-scale development projects for our arena numbers, which shouldn't be necessarily driving what we do anyway. We want to make sure we have the housing for our community, not just for us, but our, our future generations as well. Okay. Onto consent calendar. We have one item tonight. It's a meeting minutes from February 24, 2025. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted on in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the planning commission, staff, or the public request it to be discussed or removed from the calendar. Items removed will be discussed and voted upon immediately following planning commission action on the remainder of the consent calendar. Anna, this has not been polled, correct?
Correct.
All right. Can I get a motion on our minutes?
Move the item.
Moved by Council, Commissioner Martinez. I'll, I'll second it. It's call for the question.
That motion carries 6-0.
Wonderful. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. We have one old business item. Anna, if you wouldn't mind to read that into the record?
Old business item number one, conditional use permit PCUP dash, oop, I'm so sorry, that was the wrong thing. Old business item number one, minor conditional use permit ZA dash 22 dash 35. Condition of approval number 28, six-month review arena OC. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Commissioners, any ex parte to report?
Do we have to, do we have to declare if we've been at the previous meeting?
Is your question, do you have to declare it?
Yeah, because, I mean, we were all here anyways.
Which is fine. I mean, it's, it's not a legal issue. Here for review.
Okay. All right. I will turn it over to Mr. Villalobos to present the item.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Gabriel Villalobos. I'm an assistant planner with the Development Services Department, and tonight I'm presenting the six-month review for the approved amendment to arena OC located at 2968 Randolph Avenue. On August 12, 2024, the Planning Commission voted to approve minor conditional use permit ZA dash 22 dash 35, a request to amend the previously existing entitlements for arena OC, formerly known as the commissary lounge, a nightclub lounge which has existed at 2968 Randolph since 2013. Generally, the approved amendment expanded hours of operation and allowed for the establishment of a type 90 music venue ABC license for the existing business in addition to other minor changes. Of the changes approved through this entitlement, one condition specifically was added which required this six-month review, as well as an additional review by the Planning Commission after the 12-month anniversary of the effective date of approval. The intent of this condition was to review the impacts of allowing minors in this nightclub setting on city resources, more specifically in regards to calls for service by emergency services such as police, as the original proposal placed a limit on the age of patrons for this business to 18 and over, but did not restrict the number of days underage patrons could attend. Costa Mesa PD voiced concerns regarding the proposal during the review of this application, and at the public hearing, a compromise was agreed upon to allow patrons 18 and over only on Thursdays and for certain holidays. The project site is located at 2968 Randolph Avenue, which is located south of the intersection of Baker Street and Randolph Avenue. The project site is currently developed with a one-story, 16,000-square-foot industrial building and is utilized by the nightclub lounge amongst other uses. The project site shares a driveway and an additional 24 parking spaces with the property to the south addressed as 19, excuse me, addressed as 2960 Randolph Avenue. The subject property is zone MG or general industrial, and is surrounded by similarly zoned MG properties located to the west and south, and C1 commercial zones to the north and east. Other land uses in the general vicinity include large commercial developments such as the camp and the lab, breweries such as Gunwhale Ales, Green Cheek and Salty Bear, and other bars and lounges such as The Huddle and Mesa. The remainder of the nearby area consists of other light industrial and commercial land uses, including offices, retail stores, and automotive repair shops. Certain conditions were previously existing and modified through the approval of the MCTP, including such things as a modification to the hours of operation to open at 8:00 p.m. instead of 9:00 p.m., allowing the business to operate on Sundays as well as certain holidays, subject to the approval of a special event permit, and a change in ABC license from type 48 to type 90. In addition, some project-specific conditions of approval were added to address some potential concerns that may result from the approval of the amendment. These conditions included the requirement for planning commission reviews after the approval date, limiting 18 and over patrons to attend to Thursdays and certain holidays, restrictions on bottle service, and readily identifiable wristbands and age verification. In conclusion, staff has determined that there was no substantial increase in the calls for service based off of the calls for service log included as an attachment to the memo provided to the commission. Of the calls logged, only two were determined to have been on a Thursday when minors may have been present at the venue. As such, staff believes that there has been no substantial increase in calls as a result of the inclusion of underage patrons at this venue. There have been no noise complaints or code violations affiliated with the property as well. As such, staff believes that the business is operating in good faith with the conditions imposed and does not believe any modifications are required at this time. Staff will continue to monitor the business and will prepare another review after the 12-month anniversary date this upcoming August. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Zick, quick to the draw?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Villalobos, a couple of questions. First of all, had you had any conversation today with the owner to determine whether or not he planned to be at this meeting and available for questions?
Yes, I'd spoken with the business owner previously. He had, had insinuated that he would have someone in attendance. I am not sure if anyone has attended, but it doesn't appear that that's the case now.
Second question. Do you know if they keep a count of the number of patrons who are under 21 on Thursday nights?
There's not a count of patrons, but there is a, part of the conditions for the most recently approved minor conditional use permit was a requirement that a log be kept of the number of ticket sales per night that was provided to staff earlier today.
In ticket sales, you're not able to differentiate between major and minor?
No, just gross, gross numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Dixon?
That just threw me off. The Vice Chair Zick, I was, does staff do any effort when you're looking at an application like this or review after six months? Do you ever look at reviews or social media or Yelp or anything like that, or do you, do you not do that?
Yes, part of my research for this six-month review was to review the social media to one, see if the establishment was advertising 18-plus events. And for the most part, staff determined that within this past six-month period from, from August to February of this year, there were only 18-plus events advertised from the month of Febu, or, excuse me, from the month of October to the month of February. So that would be, I believe I counted in total 20 events over this past couple months since this application has been approved.
Okay. I was just curious, because I, I do the same thing, but we're not supposed to take that in consideration because it's not in front of us. But, so I'm not going to talk about it, but I appreciate that staff did that as well. So that's helpful. And then regarding how many of the folks are actually 18, I mean, if they're selling tickets and providing a log, I'd be curious, there's no, the ticket prices are all the same, whether or not you're 18 or 21?
I believe, as advertised on their website, there was a cover charge associated with those under the age of 21, on specifically just for the nights where patrons were allowed that were under 21. Other than that, I believe, for the most part, ticket, ticket sales were, were not over the internet, but at the doors, so, yeah.
I would be interested in that information, depending on how the commission proceeds, if it comes back in, you know, December, or whenever it's projected to come back in the 12-month review. I, I think that's valuable information. I'm not sure if it's something that they're required to provide or if they can provide, but it would be helpful.
It's not a requirement at this time, but we could consider it further.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah, so considering that the applicant had originally asked for something other than what we approved, did the applicant ask for any changes during the six-month review?
No, there haven't been any further requests by the applicant, not at this time at least.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I will now open the hearing for public comments. If you'd like to speak on this item, please approach the podium. If you're on Zoom, raise the hand option, or if you're joining the meeting by phone and like to speak, please press star nine. I don't see anyone in chambers. Anna, do we have anyone on phone or Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll close the public comments. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? If not, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I move that we receive and file this item.
Motion by Commissioner Martinez, seconded by Commissioner Andrade. Do you want to speak to them, your motion?
No.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak? I'll, I'll, I'll take a point of personal privilege, and I think Commissioner Zick might be thinking the same thing that I have. I'll, I'll support the motion, although I, I do hope that the applicant is present for the next review, regardless of what the staff report states. I think that would be helpful just for the commissioners to ask questions, and also I think it just shows a certain amount of respect for what's before us. Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. I agree with you. Probably wasn't going to be the thing I was going to say, but, yeah, if something's important to you, you ought to show up. No, I was simply going to comment that I will not be supporting the motion. I didn't support this item the first time around, and my mind hasn't been changed. I relied heavily on the lack of recommendation from the Costa Mesa Police Department, and I think allowing minors into what is a adult nightclub is not a value I support. So I will not support the motion.
Okay. Thank you. We call for the question.
That motion carries 5-1, with Commissioner, with Vice Chair Zick voting no.
Okay. Thank you. Lastly, we have departmental reports. Mr. Yang, Public Services, any report?
Mr. Chairman, no reports from Public Works. Thank you. Defer back to the chair.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Drapkin, Development Services?
Nothing tonight, Chair.
Okay. I think we're going to bat 0 for 3. Mr. Preziosi, anything from the city attorney?
Nothing this evening, Chair.
Okay. Or maybe I should say 3 for 3. Okay, I'll adjourn the meeting.